People speaking in opposition, that is how we run these hearings.
For tonight.
For tonight. Depending on whether we close the public hearing tonight, which is something we'll consider later. But I will allow the applicant to please respond. I mean, rather than recite all of questions, you heard most of the concerns.
Sir, before, forgive me, sir, just before he does it, I just thought of something as you said there. Will we have an opportunity to obtain our own traffic study relevant to the specific location and not surrounding locations to submit for the board?
Do you, can you commission a traffic study?
I don't, I'm wondering though, if the board has indicated, as I believe it has, that you plan maybe closing the hearing tonight, my concern is submission of that.
Yeah, I probably won't be closing it tonight, but we'll take up that matter later on in the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Forgive my, uh...
No, it's, please, let's keep going.
I can answer two of the questions, I did not hear all of them because I was talking to my client. The first question about employees versus outside contract. They do, the Limo does use a temp-to-permanent arrangement. They will have the neighborhood of 20 temporary employees at any given time in the hope to convert them into basically a probation period that they eventually convert into full-time employees. I'm not sure, I don't see the connection between a temporary employee versus a full-time employee, whether that raises different security issues than an employee. And with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, the question that I answered that didn't satisfy, and it was different from the question he was just asking, and I can't answer. The question that I couldn't answer was how many trucks are we going to have during construction, and we don't know, and that's still my answer on that. In terms of the truck activity currently, and the kind of truck activity that they can definitely expect, it's approximately six trucks a day, two to three 18-wheelers making deliveries, and the rest would just be FedEx or UPS trucks. So in terms of the truck activity, that has nothing to do with the construction, we're talking about six. And I had mentioned that to him before, I don't blame him for wanting to ask it again because I didn't give him incorrect information on the number of ships, but that's the answer to that question. The others, I have to admit, I did not hear any of that.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. We have not gotten the distances yet, right?
No.
Still waiting. And I think, Mr. Chairman, it may benefit the commission and certainly staff to see if you can provide an aerial, if you have it, if not, it's not a map, that shows where your entrance is, the access road to Turner, again, Turner, and where you start to turn off for the residential portion, which I believe starts in Ridgefield, doesn't start in Danbury, the residential portion starts in Ridgefield.
Kent Darren Overton, my moment to run for the record. This was an overall aerial that we submitted as part of the application to show to meet the requirements of the vicinity map. It was a little more information than what was required, but we thought I gave you a picture of some of the existing conditions. As I mentioned, here is that sanitary sewer pump station, and here's Turner Road as it enters, comes up towards the property. Here's the existing access drive and the existing normal paths. You can see how Turner Road, past the access drive, turns towards southerly and then heads down into Ridgefield, where eventually this changes into Barnum Place. The pool facility is located right here. Part of my discussion before is saying that this site wouldn't have the traffic coming out of the site wouldn't have impact on the pool facility, is that truck traffic or any traffic is not going to move in this direction and cause conflicts with people crossing the road or trying to access the pool facility here. We expected all the traffic is going to, again, take the path of least resistance out here, where there isn't really any reasonable access to get to, going to the right, and use Turner Road out of Sawmill Road. One of the residents brought up the issue of, well, there's more residential development over here in the McKean Place area. Well, there's a paved sidewalk that runs all along the southern part of the road here that provides pedestrian access into the pool facility, so that if people want to walk to the pool, or kids want to ride their bike to the pool, they have a paved access off of the roadway that they can ride on, to connect them between the two residential portions. The distances from the, we don't have the proposed building on this plan, but we've estimated it based off of our plans, the distance from the pool house to the nearest corner of the proposed building is about 600 feet. I believe the nearest residence would be located here, up near the New York border, to the proposed building is approximately 500 feet. There was a mention about that culvert was completely ignored under Turner Road. This is the large wetland here, it doesn't show up, there is a color, you might see the green space a little bit more, and that continues to the south as well. There is a series of culverts located next to each other, and Turner Road about, so, close to our property line, not the site plan out, but our plans do show the exact location of those. And the reason why we haven't discussed those is our development has no impact on those. Flow from the southern portion of the wetland here flows in the northerly direction, continues on up, and then wraps around to Lake Kenosha. So our site, where the storm water comes down and discharges into the wetland, is downstream of that cross, so we have no impact from that, which is the reason why we haven't mentioned it. And my comments as far as this, there is an increase in size of the building, but what this is proposed as follows the current zoning regulations. We're not changing the zoning regulations to put something bigger there. What I'm saying, as far as this was being planned, it was planned as part of the zoning for this area, as part of the industrial zoning. We are utilizing the site per the existing zoning regulations and not changing the zone, or changing the zoning regulations to accommodate this, because part of what I was saying about this was it had been planned in the zoning of the area. I wasn't relating that to the existing development that was previously, that's all I have.
Uh, question, Jeff.
Mr. Chairman, Darren, can you just show the commission again where the nearest houses are along the southern border? Just quickly point to them.
There it is, the access road comes in here, wraps around, comes up to a cul-de-sac, and there's kind of a shared driveway or a private road extension that comes off. A couple of houses at the end of this extension, there's also a short shared kind of driveway that comes up here, there's a few houses in this location, and then other than that, it's the pool house. So there's one, two, three, four, about five houses that are located, probably the closest along the border there, within the 500 feet, a couple more within 500 feet here, total of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight houses that are within 500 feet of the real property line.
Just a follow-up, Darren, you talked about on the landscape, there are the color plan.
That's right, Jeff, go ahead.
On the color plan, during initial discussions, I asked for a bar along that southerly property line to add some buffering to those houses in that area. Can you point that out to the commission again and describe the type and height of those trees and the number of trees?
We've put an offset row of evergreens along the property line between the road and the existing property line or town line. So these are offset to provide an immediate screen, and then there's also along this hillside, we've provided some other shady trees along here as well as in the parking lot. So this continues to step up, up the hillside as you, as you go along, so there's a screening buffer immediately along the property line, and then as you step up this slope here and up into the parking lot, there's additional plantings proposed that will screen the view of the buildings from the residences to the south, as well as if, if you saw in the aerial, but there's quite a bit of mature vegetation further to the south that is also beyond our property that is expected to remain.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one question?
I'm sorry, I cannot allow, you, you heard what I said earlier, I cannot allow, I can't allow.
All right, commission members, before we vote on whether to close public hearing or keep it open, I'd like to make the motion for a five-minute recess. So, move second, all in favor? Five minutes. Well, we'll reconvene to meeting now. Commission member Yurice expressed his desire to ask a couple of additional questions to the applicant, Mr. Yurice, go right ahead.
For the design engineer. I asked you about the lighting, and you said, well, it's on the site plan, so is that coming? I said, yeah, and I never saw it, so I never got back to asking about the lights, the placement, the direction, and such like. Do you have a board on the site plan for tonight, or do I need just to dig into everything that you filed?
Was the question for photometric plan or just lighting location plan?
Lighting location, I was going to have, you know, follow-up questions on lighting, but I assumed when I said, is that coming, in response to the site plan, and it was, yeah, I expected we were going to see it, we never did.
Further reference, I'm going to go again, we do show the actual light pole location in the parking lot and the access driveway where proposed on the site plan. They're actually shown on the rendering as well, this involves very tough to see understood. There's also a lighting standard, and we call them shoebox fixtures, 20-foot by mounting height detail shown in the plans.
Okay, so it's in the plans, but you don't have anything to present?
I do, we do not.
Then for me to see that, I need to get in the plans.
Correct.
That's, it's, it was kind of against my, okay, is that okay?
Commission member, for your pleasure, regarding this matter. Jennifer, we're not, we're in a loss, really, right?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, we've received staff comments from all the departments, we received an approval, I'm going to go to the staff report. We have received an approval from the building department for the handicap parking. The engineering department, although I note not received, we did receive that, I believe, the day after my report. That's dated, May 3rd, since that time, the applicant has submitted response, a response letter and calculations and revised plans addressing Dave Nell's comments. And the fire marshal, we had comments received from May 2nd that had to do with the access road, they presented to the commission tonight that they have expanded that width to 18 feet, I believe, I spoke to the fire marshal, and he was, he was okay with that, that's what he had requested. And the construction services department had not reviewed it, there was no work proposed in the right of way at this point. I will ask them to look at the radii improvement as well as the traffic engineer, we did receive his sign-off on May 1st, not requesting any improvements, however, as you know, we've requested that radii improvement, so they'll be looking at that as well. And EIC is still reviewing this, but as we've done in the past, as long as we have their, as long as we consider their decision, that's what we need, so we don't need their sign-off at this point. I do know, I did speak to Dan Barudy, and they'll be looking at that Wednesday night, he'll be issuing his summary ruling to them. They responded to my departmental comments, which requested the additional street trees, the buffering, the truck turning movement plan, which I'm satisfied with. I'd also asked for some additional information for the site lighting, I'm satisfied with that, to minimize the glare to the adjacent residential uses. We've asked for a note that all the onsite lighting fixtures must contain shields to minimize glare, I have seen that on the plans, it meets our standards, it meets the zoning regulations, which states that, hold on, that all glare has to, has to remain on the subject property, it cannot blend into another property, that section, I think it's the seventh, I believe. So all of my comments have been resolved, so at this point, we have all departmental comments.
And we're not already awaiting very much from the department?
No, at this point, again, we, we received revisions this afternoon addressing engineering comments and some ancillary comments regarding traffic about the radii. These can be reviewed before the commission makes the decision, the applicant is... Once we close the hearing, the applicant is not, is not allowed to submit any additional information, so we review what's on the record, but you are allowed to receive additional departmental comments before the commission makes the decision. So at this point, it's up to the commission whether you keep the public hearing open, we're not waiting for any additional information that can't be resolved within the next week with a departmental response. That has to do basically with a lot of engineering that I spoke to Dave Nell about yesterday, and he's confident that they've designed to the 100-year, which far exceeds our standard of the 25-year. The issues with the water and sewer are currently being worked out, there's, there's no question that they will be worked out, and it's just a matter of working out the details.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, hold on, I don't know if the applicant, they'd express wanting to offer something additional to the commission before you close.
We were talking about the, and you heard about the patuminous paved surface on the Ridgefield side of Turner Road. I've only looked at it once, but it's not in the best condition. I also am not 100% sure, I believe the town of Ridgefield owns that piece of property, so we would need to work with them, but to the extent that they would allow us to do it, we would be willing to repair that and make it more passable and more usable. I mean, it's really not a safe situation for children who can fight on any street when there's an available sidewalk, but we'd like to make that sidewalk better. I'm not sure we're going to make it perfect, I'm not sure that it's capable of being perfect, but we would like to offer, and we could make it a requirement to improve.
You're comfortable with us making that a condition of approval?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ken.
Would you be comfortable putting a sign there that says, "No egress on Turner Road," so there's less traffic on that, because some people would know that they can't go out.
They don't, they don't.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I follow.
No, well, if you go on Turner, if you go on Turner Road and you go into Ridgefield, there's no way to get out.
You mean at Sawmill?
You mean, uh, on the road, uh...
What I'm saying is, once you cross the water, going into Ridgefield, there's no, yeah, there's no way for anybody, there's not reason for anybody, no outlet, I'm sorry.
I don't think we can control that, but that's certainly something that...
If you're talking about at Sawmill, that would, that's in Danbury proper, that would be up to the chief of police, Al Mayford. If you're talking about a no outlet sign on the corner of their driveway, they could do whatever they want.
Right. Thank you very much, I'm going to be down here. Mr. Sermonera?
Repeat my motion, motion to close the public hearing.
A second. Motion made to close the public hearing in the second, is there any good discussion, commission members? Go ahead.
Sorry. I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with what was presented here tonight as being a little, a little glossed over from what I'm used to seeing.
What specifically?
Well, I'll get there. Such as utility plans and site plans in detail being presented, both through the commission and the public. Well, all of those documents are readily available downstairs in the planning department, and anyone in here can go down there and see this, as, as, as committee. I think it's a traffic report until tonight, no fault of the applicant, so I'm not real comfortable with that, but the only way I'm going to vote to close this public hearing is the applicant absolutely understands that when it comes to the decision time to approve or deny this application, I may or may not be on board based on what my follow-up is downstairs on what you like with that, that's, I'm not going to get more specific because the presentation's a little...
Okay, but again, the point you made, was when I voted in favor...
This is the whether we close the public hearing.
Any other comments, commission members? What I'll do is I'll take a roll, I'll vote, just in case anyone wants to vote, yes or no, whether they're a voice vote. Again, a yes is to close the public hearing, a no is to not close the public hearing. Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Yurice? Mr. Sermonera?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, it's four to one, the public hearing on this matter is closed. Thank you very much, folks, Henry Lee. We're going to take five, four minutes and let the face clear out, then we'll move to the second party. And we're called over to a regular meeting of the zoning commission for Tuesday, May 8th, 2012. Commissioner Estefan?
Here.
Commissioner Haddad?
Here.
Commissioner Hu is currently absent. Commissioner Jari?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Kovacs?
There.
Commissioner Leola?
Here.
Commissioner Tierney is currently absent. Commissioner Haas?
Here.
Mr. Orvex?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
And I too am here. Okay, if you haven't noticed this evening, our distinguished planning director is under the weather, so we have the distinct honor of being joined by the deputy planning director, Ms. Sharon Cletro, this evening, so she's been going in your days. Like to introduce her? No?
Nope, what's her name, somebody's phone.
Our next regular meeting is scheduled for May 22nd, 2012. We do plan on having that meeting as we do have a public hearing scheduled, which I'll remind us later in the meeting. So with that, you would please stand for the pledge, and Commissioner Leola, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, the course, the stands, the nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
For the record, I'm going to go ahead right now and seat Commissioner Haas for Commissioner Hu, and Commissioner Orvex for Commissioner Tierney. I know I don't have to go to the public hearing, I'll just explain things. We have no minutes to accept right now, as the planning and zoning office has been swamped with business and coverage, so we hope to have those at the next meeting. With that, we'll move on to our first public hearing, which is the petition of Commerce Park Realty LLC and Eagle Road LLC to amend Section 6A 2A subsection 16 and 6B 2A 12. The zoning regulations change existing language from manufacturing, et cetera, of candy to manufacturing, et cetera, of food in both industrial zones. Commissioner Estefan, do you have the legal notice? Do you agree to legal notice, and Commissioner Haddad, do you have the standing motion?
Yes, sir, and I will read these down.
Notice is hereby given that the zoning commission of the city of Danbury called the public hearing commencing at 7:30 p.m. on May 8th, 2012, in the council chambers on the third floor at City Hall, 155 Derrick Alaba, to consider the following matter. Petition of Commerce Park Realty LLC and Eagle Road LLC to amend sections 6A 2A subsection 16 and 6B 2A subsection 12. The zoning regulations change existing language from manufacturing, et cetera, of candy to manufacturing, et cetera, of food in both industrial zones. Parties in interest and substance shall have an opportunity to part of this time. Robert Sevalola, Chairman.
His is not, saving paper, beautiful, thank you. Taxpayers are saving paper. His name, please listen. Sidney, to the city of Danbury, May 2012, to Robert Sevalola, Chairman, Danbury Zoning Commission, from Arnold Fennelli, Jr., Chairman, Danbury Planning Commission. Regarding eight-three-year referral petition of Commerce Park Realty LLC and Eagle Road LLC to amend sections 6A 2A 16 and 6B 2A 12 of zoning regulations. In parentheses, change existing language from manufacturing, et cetera, of candy to manufacturing, et cetera, of food in both industrial zones. At the special meeting held on May 7th, 2012, the city of Danbury Planning Commission voted to give the above referenced petition a positive recommendation for the following reason. Considering the range of other products which can be manufactured, assembled, compounded, processed, packaged, or treated in these zoning districts, there is no good reason to limit the processing of food to only candy. The motion to give a positive recommendation was made by Mr. Yurice, seconded by Mr. Sermonera, and passing out of the seat. This is the city of Danbury Planning and Zoning Department, dated May 1st, 2012, to city of Danbury Planning Commission, city of Danbury Zoning Commission, and as IL from planning director. Regarding Commerce Park Realty LLC and Eagle Road LLC amendment to change candy processing to food processing in IL 40 and IG 80. We have received a petition to amend the list of permitted uses specified in section 6A 2A 16 and section 6B 2A 12 of zoning regulations, IL 40 and IG 80 respectively. Currently, both provisions read as follows. Manufacturing, compounding, processing, packaging, or treatment of candy, cosmetics, drugs, pharmaceuticals, or toiletries. The proposed amendment will replace the word candy with the broader term food. The reasons given by the petitioner as to why this amendment should be granted are as follows. The above referenced section of the zoning regulations currently commits manufacturing, compounding, processing, packaging, or treatment of candy, cosmetics, drugs, pharmaceuticals, or toiletries. The zoning regulations do not allow the processing of food products. We believe this is an oversight in the regulations, and in order to clarify the same, would suggest the elimination of the word candy and the substitution of the word food. Processing of food products with a common use in the IL 40 and IG 80 zones and should be included in the regulations. We do not know whether this was an oversight or not, but regardless, see no reason to limit the processing of food to only candy, especially when one notes that other products which can be manufactured, assembled, compounded, processed, packaged, or treated in these zoning districts. Consequently, we have no objection to the proposed amendments. Is there anybody here who's in favor of this petition? Mr. Jaber? You seem so far away today.
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning commission, my name is Paul Jayweb, attorney at law in Danbury, and I represent the applicants, Commerce Park Realty LLC and Eagle Road LLC, both of 75 North Drive in Danbury. The applicants are the owners of most of the properties located at Commerce Park in Danbury, which is an industrial office park located off Route 6. And what happened was they have a couple of prospective tenants for their buildings, and both tenants coincidentally are both related to each other, but both tenants are in the business of manufacturing food products. So apparently, when it came about to getting necessary permits for opening their businesses, it was discovered that food products generally, not manufacturing food products generally, are not committed in the zoning regulations. So we're henceforth here to hopefully remedy that situation. The application, as is noted, is a simple application to amend the regulations both from the IG 80, which is the industrial, general industrial zone, and the IL 40 zones, both industrial zones, to permit the manufacture of food products. And it's a simple amendment by changing the word manufacturing candy to manufacturing of food products generally. We believe that this is consistent with the plan of development, plan of conservation involved in the city of Danbury, in that when you read the plan, it continually talks about encouraging economic growth through manufacturing, manufacturing processes primarily in the industrial zone. And that's exactly what this will do, it will bring in new businesses, these are two out-of-town businesses which will come to Danbury. They're probably medium-sized, they don't say much about them actually, but they're both out of town, come to Danbury, I'm sure employ additional people in Danbury, thus encouraging economic growth throughout the city, thus compliance with the plan of development as they begin. So I really don't have much else, if you have any questions, happy to answer.
Do you have any questions for, for Mr. Haddad? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, Jaber, is all of Commerce Park sitting in the IL 40 zone, or is it, is part of the IG 80 zone?
IG 80, it's predominantly IG 80.
It's predominantly, but it's in both, both zones?
No, you know, some of the, well, I can't tell you exactly, but some of the outskirts probably around Eagle Brook is IL 40, you know, comes out that way, entrance.
And the heart of it is the IG 80?
Heart, oh yes, predominantly IG 80. Heart, oh yes, predominantly IG-80.
Still questions, Mr. Jayber?
Why did you, why was the inclusion of 40 and Eagle? Because, as, as Mr. Jayber said, it's mostly, it is 80 and is the industrial part. And even down David Booker, my shot is 80, on David Booker Road.
I'm gonna try to answer that, Mr. Jayber, then, if you have further insight. My, I'm speculating, purely speculation, that, just to keep the industrial zones consistent, because I, I would, I would guess, two years from now, Mr. Jayber would be here and say, "I, we don't know why, for some reason, it's allowed in IG-80, it's not allowed in IL-40, and it's an oversight on your part, so to expedite that, it's easier to change in both industrial zones, keep the uses consistent."
It's the same terrific oversight argument. Actually, when I spoke to Dennis about it, he asked me to include both, both industrial zones, because they really mirror each other with respect to, to uses, with manufacturing and all of them. It would be inconsistent to have it one way or the other.
Additional questions? Okay. Thank you. Do anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody against this petition? Anybody in opposition to this petition? Anybody in opposition to this petition? Ms. Colletra, does the Commerce or Planning Department?
No, we have nothing for her.
Let the staff report speak for itself. Mr. Jayber, do you have any rebuttal to the outpouring of...
Right.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion, Commissioner Haddad.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Estefan, discussion, all those in favor of closing the public hearings, the difference in saying aye, opposed, motion carries. Commissioner Haddad?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move this petition, Commerce Park Realty LLC and Eagle Road LLC to hold business for consideration and possible action.
May back to Commissioner Haddad, seconded by Commissioner Kovacs. Discussion, all those in favor, signature pressing aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item number one, under old business, the petition of Commerce Park Realty LLC and Eagle Road LLC to amend section 6A2A16 and 6B2A12, the zoning regulations change existing language from manufacturing, et cetera, of candy to manufacturing, et cetera, of food in both industrial zones. Commissioner Kovacs?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve this change. It fits with the districts that are specified, the IL-40 and IG-80, and we received a positive recommendation from any judge.
And it's consistent with the constitution?
Yep, and it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development. Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Haas. Discussion. A yes vote will be to approve, a no vote will be to deny. Commissioner Kovacs?
Yes.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Orvitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddad?
Yes.
Commissioner Estefan?
Yes.
Commissioner Jowdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Leola?
Yes.
And I choose a yes. Nine to zero.
Nine to zero.
Thank you. We wish your applicants best of luck in their relocation.
Thank you.
With that, we have nothing under new business, we have nothing under other matters. We do have correspondence that we, were emailed out, provided a copy of, this is a video of cease and desist order for Lena Shapendi, 18 Madison Avenue, it's lot number 812255, the RA8 zones, a violation of section 3.C1, 3E9D, 4A2, 10V1A4, and 10F, a commercial automotive repair business being conducted at this address. The approved use is a single-family dwelling only, and that cease and desist was issued unmade first in 2012. Do we have any questions regarding this cease and desist? Okay, under for reference only, we have petition of Taran I.A. Iello, 9 Redlock Street, this is lot number I, 15234, for change in zone from RA8 to R3, and that public hearing is scheduled for May 22nd, 2012. With that, is there anything else for this evening? Entertained a motion to adjourn? Meaned by Commissioner Estefan, seconded by Commissioner Leola, discussion on adjourned. All those in favor, signature pressing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, adjourn.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Rory Duraco with the Danbury Police Department. We ask you to please refrain from using your handheld electronic device while operating your motor vehicle. This has caused citizens property damage, personal injury, and loss of life. So please, when you're operating your motor vehicle, keep your hands on the wheel, your eyes on the road, not on your phone. Thank you.